Okay, so I can start.
Yeah, go ahead and start whenever you're ready.
Okay, so I'd like to call the Palolo Neighborhood Board Number Six to order at this time. It is seven oh five P M. And we had a few technical difficulties. And I thank everyone for their attendance today. I just wanted to shout out to any veterans that served our country. Because I attended a Veterans Day celebration at the Lana Killah Senior Center. And the freedoms we enjoy are so precious. And we want to thank all of our veterans. So let's give a big hand to me veterans out there. And happy Thanksgiving as we start our meeting. A lot of turkey hunters.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that said, I'd like to begin with our monthly report. So can we have the Honolulu Fire Department?
What do you mean what now?
Please.
Captain.
Oh, good evening. So yes, this is Captain Lau over at the Palolo Fire Station First Watch. And I'm just going to read out the statistics and then our fire tips. So for October twenty twenty three, we had two nuisance fires, one activated alarm. And as far as medical emergencies, four medical emergencies, four motor vehicle collision or crashes. And then as far as our safety tips coming into the holiday seasons, we want to make sure that everyone is safe this holiday season. Thanksgiving is the peak day for home cooking fires with more than three times the daily average for such incidents. Christmas Day and Christmas Eve rank second and third with both having nearly twice the daily average. Unattended cooking is by far the leading contributing factor in cooking fires and fire deaths. Make sure to stay in the kitchen, focus on the food that you're going to cook so that we can come over and join you folks for dinner. Stay in the home when cooking turkey and check on it frequently so you don't dry it out. If you want to fry turkey, purchase it in a grocery store, restaurant, or buy a fryer that does not use oil. Turkey fires that use cooking oil are not safe. These fryers use large amounts of oil at high temperatures, which can cause devastating burns. And we have seen those before. Consider purchasing an infrared fryer, air fryer, or electric turkey fire. That has been listed by a qualified testing laboratory. Again, do not leave any of your cooking unattended. And if you've got any great recipes and are willing to share it with us, we'd be more than happy to receive those. Other than that, any questions?
Okay, do we have any questions from our board? Uh, any?
Somebody else just.
Okay, Earl.
Captain.
Yes, sir.
I meant to, I meant to meet you in Palolo. You stationed in the Palolo, right?
Yes.
Yep, he goes, okay. So what I wanted to, what can I tell you is that you know when you get an emergency call in the Palolo Chinese Home?
Yes.
They always come up mostly Tenth Avenue. So what I'm trying to say now is that when they make the turn, don't turn them off until they make, until they in the property of Palolo Chinese Home. It's a main turn over there, okay? So the cars that coming around, you know, if we get the siren on, you get guys, you know, supposed to be fifty miles an hour, but they're going fast. I live right on, I live right across there. So I always see the cars, you know what I mean? So what I want is that you understand is when they come up, just ring the siren. And then they're making a U-turn, the right, the right turn, leave it on until the inside of Palolo, the Chinese Home in home. So you want the guys who coming around the turn, you know. Yes.
So we, we do use our siren to notify people that are in the area and to other drivers. We also do our best not to make a nuisance of ourselves. And we try to cut the alarms when it's a little bit later at night so as not to wake everybody up. But I do understand your concern. I will talk with the other captains to see what they believe about that. However, yes, once we get off the main road, that's usually when we do cut that particular siren.
Because I, I can understand when you, if you do go on a flat road, before you reach the house, you can turn them off. But that's a bad turn order. Supposed to be fifty miles, you know, and you're going twenty-five or thirty-five miles. So you know, so you get your siren on until you turn inside. So the guys that not paying attention can hear the siren and stop one time. A lot of people going fast, they're going about thirty miles. Okay, but I live right over there. I always started and stopped. I don't want to see any of the firemen get hurt. Okay?
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And we are all about safety. Yes.
Okay.
To Earl, any questions from our public? Okay, seeing none, uh, thank you, Captain Lau for your report. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Okay, Captain, see you. Bye bye.
All right.
So I'll now call on the Honolulu Police Department. Do we have a representative here?
We kept in our Nakamura, Lieutenant Nakamura.
Let's, if they appear, get them later in the agenda of the chair.
Okay, we will double back for the Honolulu Police Department should they arrive. So at this point, no report. Okay, Honolulu Board of Water Supply and Dominic.
Right up here, Dominic.
So he should talk into Mr. Carter.
It's fine, I could, I can just speak up.
Okay.
Is that loud enough? If I speak like that, all right? Good evening, board members, Dominic Theis, Honolulu Board of Water Supply. Looking back at the month of October, we did have one main break in the valley, October twenty fifth. This was a twelve inch ductile iron main fronting fifteen thirty Tenth Avenue. I spoke to Earl and he had some concerns about the patch there. So I will take a look at that and report that back to our group as well. We do have two upcoming construction projects, neither of which has started. So they're both pending a start date. These are the Waomau Eight Inch Water Main Project as well as the Palolo Water System Improvements Part Three. So I will report back to the board every month with a status on both of those projects as well. A quick couple of general announcements. The Board of Water Supply is proud to announce that we've launched our twenty twenty-four poster contest, poetry and poster contest. The poster portion is open for students in grades K through six. And the poetry portion is open for students in grades seven through twelve. This year's theme is our water, our home. And the deadline to enter is February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. For more information on this contest, you can visit our website, Lastly, I wanted to announce that the Board of Water Supply is participating in the Honolulu City Lights Parade. The event is Saturday, December second. Starts at five thirty, fronting Honolulu Hallie. And the lighting of the Christmas tree will happen at six P M. So come down and join everyone for that event. And before I introduce our manager for an update on Red Hill, I'd be happy to take any questions on behalf of the Board of Water Supply at this point.
Any question?
The only one I get, you know about the passion, very, very bad too, on Tenth Avenue.
Questions? So that. Questions? No? So last month, there was an inquiry on the status of Red Hill. You know, I've seen on the news, the de-fueling. And there was a request for an update. And we are lucky to have our manager and chief engineer, Ernie Lau, here tonight to give us an update on that. So.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, first, and thank you, Chair, for Maual and Morganus. I'd like to also introduce some of my staff that are here tonight. I also have my deputy manager, Mr. Erwin Calatto. Erwin and I have been on the Red Hill issue for, since twenty fourteen. We have Captain, you know, finally, get our locations on. From Philo Bernardo, our vote. On the water risk controller, this is Joe. And also our, actually head of our Camp for Projects Division, J D. So they are coming to water system inclusion projects will be overseen by our Camp for Projects Division. So just a real up, update, quick update on Red Hill. Remember before October, there was still a hundred and four million gallons of diesel jet fuel sitting in underground tanks built during World War Two, a hundred feet above our drinking water aquifer in the Palawa Valley. I'm glad to report that the Navy, which started de-fueling on October sixteenth or so, last month, they de-fueled or removed fuel by gravity de-fueling about seventy-nine million gallons of fuel. So they're at about seventy-six percent, a little over seventy-six percent, over a hundred and four million gallons. So there's still about twenty-four million gallons left to be de-fueled. Under gravity de-fueling, which is the emission of the Joint Task Force Red Hill dedicated to de-fueling, they are going to de-fuel most of the fuel, but not all of it. When they're done, which will be probably around March or April of next year, there's still going to be about over thirty thousand gallons of residual fuel and some sludge in the bottoms of the tanks still to be removed from the facility. And that'll be done, what I understand from the Navy, under the closure process, work to close the facility permanently, they'll take out the last few drops removed. So that's, that's the status right now. And I just want to say mahalo for all your prayers, that this proceed without mishap. And that the Navy and the Joint Task Force does a good job. We seem to be very focused on the mission right now. We just got to keep on praying that it's going to be completed with no, no further leaks. Even after de-fueling though, and the remove that residual fuel, there's still what has been released over the eighty-year history of this over two facility. It's been storing fuel there deep underground at Red Hill, a full cocked heat for eighty years, and it has leaked in the past. Now, we think at least a hundred eighty thousand gallons, maybe not, maybe more over its history. So there's the long-term process of cleaning up the environment. Cleaning up fuel that's been released from the environment, that's got to the groundwater aquifer or it's above and set volcanic rock above the aquifer that's still there to be addressed. So we are going to continue to stay on this issue because it'll take literally probably years and years, maybe decades to accomplish. So that, that's the latest update. Available for any questions.
Questions from our board? Okay, Juanita?
Actually, one of my questions are, when you said there's all this environmental concern of the leakage. And so does that, or was the water line also inclusive of where the fuel line is running? Were they running perpendicular, like one above the other at all?
Yeah, there, you mean the Board of Water Supply?
Water line?
Water pipe, which is about forty-two inches in diameter. Actually, it's, so if you picture the tunnel being this rolled up paper here and carrying the fuel pipelines from the tanks toward harbor, about three miles, over three miles distance. When the facility, when Halawa Shaft was built, they'd crossed in another separate tunnel above the fuel built in, containing the fuel pipelines. And there is a side tunnel that connects the two together. And the emergency connection that was installed around nineteen forties, nineteen forties. So that, that valve stays closed. But the fuel leaks would affect the lower tunnel where the fuel pipelines are. It would not affect our pipeline tunnel that goes under the ridge there at Red Hill all the way till it surfaces near the Monoloa. So it carries that forty-two inch pipe, which used to bring water from Halawa Shaft, the Board of Water Supply Halawa Shaft, to be pumped all the way to Pomaloo, now needs a Pomaloo where we live. And that, that water source still remains shut down. So the pipeline is actually taking water from our Monoloa Wells, which is closer to Monoloa Middle School and Elementary School. And water is actually pumped backwards toward the Halawa industrial.
And so again, the water lines, it looks like the fuel line and the water line, they cross at different places.
Yeah, the fuel lines are down here and above it in a separate tunnel, so Board of Water Supply water. So if the fuel leaks out of that pipe, it'll go down toward the aquifer column.
And that's the, and, and do you know what the, what the thought is because of the fact that it's leaking down to the aquifer? What kind of potential dangers?
Yeah, so that's the risks, you know, there. So between the bottoms of the tank and the top of the aquifer, you know, what we call a water table, there's about a hundred feet of lava rock that's not saturated or not underwater. So we think that past fuel releases from this facility, from the tanks or pipelines, could be still hung up in that unsaturated wa- rock, almost like hung up in a sponge. And then grab and continue to release and drip down into the water table or the aquifer. So what we, we are saying and we're asking the regulators and the military to, to address that, to do what they call remediation, to clean it up. Because it's not acceptable just to empty the tanks, both the facility. That's a good thing because we don't want this situation to ever be repeated in generations and generations. But you have to clean up the mess that this facility has created to the environments. And still those releases, at least a hundred eighty thousand gallons, maybe even a lot more. We don't know exactly for sure.
So similar to like how we have protection to like to hold a lava and you know how remediation went with the military, get the fun set aside, or there were all kinds of different things that we could look to for the future so that they don't have to deal with this problem. Anyone's there to be responsible. So are there things like that going on right now in this discussion?
I think there, you know, that is, that is the big question. So they're, they're going to de-fuel most of the fuel by maybe March or April next year. There'll still be a small amount that'll take maybe three years plus to get rid of. And then the field's still shut down. But it's the cleanup of the environment and the groundwater after that. And that is something that is, it'll probably occur over maybe two decades. Now, how do you sustain that? How do you involve the military civil? And that's the, that's the thought is, how do we do that? That'll maybe stand another generation to get done. And to stay and stay focused on that, not let people forget. Because I, I am not going to be there for thirty more years. But how do we pass that, ensure there's some kind of body or group that's going to help to continue to provide oversight and, and keep the military accountable and work with the regulators to continue to clean them? And I don't have the answer right now, but that's, that's the questions we're asking. How do, how do we sustain this beyond our generation to the next, maybe even the next generation?
And we still aren't that sure about the aquifer below, if there's any kind of?
Yeah, one, one problem is, one way to figure out what has reached the underground aquifer and is in the, in the water itself and moving with that groundwater is to drill test wells, what we call monitor wells. And right now, there's not enough monitor wells spread out across Halawa Valley to give us a better sense of what's happening deep underground. And picture this too. You know, if there's a fuel leak on ship off the Waikiki Beach, if they leak fuel off of there, you don't show up on the beach, you can see it. But what's happened at Red Hill is you've got equivalent of twenty large tanks, almost like twenty large tankers underground, standing vertically, and they've leaked in the past. Now, you can't see it. So how do you tell? You have to drill enough wells. That's part of this idea of getting an unders- true picture of what's happening deep underground. Maybe hundreds of people in there. And more wells need to be installed.
And that will be at the cost of the military table?
We feel it should be at the cost of the military. Board of Water Supply, we're taking some actions right now because we know that to get all of those wells drilled and tested, it's probably going to take years and years to happen. And we are not waiting. So we got three wells shut down. We're not waiting years and years to learn whether or not we can shut, turn them back on safely or not. If the aquifer's contaminated and fuels moving across Halawa Valley from the east side to the west side, we're already looking for replacement wells to develop replacement well capacity. And, and we feel because it takes so many years to put a, find a new well, pick a spot, drill the well, test it, and then build the production facility. And that whole process to go through that permitting, designing construction takes a long time. So we cannot waste the time that we have right now. We have to proceed, and that's using Board of Water Supply funds. But I want to assure you, we are going to pursue cost recovery. We're keeping track of our costs related to Red Hill. And we've already said, I've said this before, we're keeping all our options open to pursue costs because ultimately it was created by this federal facilities and not created by our ratepayers and customers. But for now, we got to front some of that cost until we can get the federal dollars to start going until we go to our system.
Someone's that going to impact the households and communities that have to feed their water, those who are being rights or rights?
Yeah, that's actually the next presentation. Yeah, it's a good bridge to the next presentation. I'll leave that with you then. Yes, sir. But I also want to point out too, this proposed water rates that we're going to be talking to you tonight, Red Hill is not the main driver for the meaningful experience. It, it is a portion of it, but it isn't all the reason why we're increasing levels.
Okay, thank you.
Terrific. Thanks.
There's further questions?
Oh, Ernie doing a good job, you know, all this stuff here, what I mean? You, you watching out for the bottom side. And but the thing that you go and make sure that the Navy pay for everything. You know what I mean? Don't, don't let them talk to you now. You want that sort of, the people who are going to pay for that. Well, actually, the Navy is responsible for everything. And do everything what you got to do. You're doing a good job and you got to cost them a warning. And there you go, you know? That's not your fault, boss, that's all. Okay? And thank you for doing a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Calatto.
And Garrett?
Yes, just kind of on the idea of getting the federal funds to help support this project. I know that the Build Back Better legislation here marked federal funds, I guess, to fix pipes to help with kind of the infrastructure regarding water for, for communities. Do you know, is that, are those funds still available? Is that a potential?
Yeah, I think there's still funding available and I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think it's also going through the state revolving loan fund or revolving fund process that the E B A and our department helps to put some and provide low-interest loans or sometimes grants to utilities to improve the water system infrastructure. There's also the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, I I J A or something, another federal program. Some of it is also, I think, addressing emerging contaminants and providing funding opportunities for communities dealing with emerging contaminants, like PFAS is the latest one. And maybe by the end of the year, the C P A will actually pass new regulations or drinking understandings or that. So we're still looking. And one thing, one thing I want to say too, you know, we are, we know that the way forward is that we need to look for funding outside the Board of Water Supply customers. That the Board of Water Supply customers are facing costs that are not going to go away. And they're actually getting more challenging with the pandemic and other things that happened. We didn't expect this ten years ago. But we have to go pursue federal fund, funding opportunities, especially federal funds. So that's a, an effort that we're going to continue. We are kind of our mode of operation seeking federal funds. And I do want to say thank the Honolulu City Council and Mayor for the American Rescue Plan App fiscal recovery funds. We basically are getting, and this is to actually do C I P projects for infrastructure. Twelve forty-two million dollars in total of that. Then last session, our state legislature and this one, mahalo them. They provided ten million dollars in C I P funds. Basically, they give her boat bonds at the state level, have the state pay back the debt service, not the Board of Water Supply customers, but ten million dollars that will be used for monitor wells for Red Hill and also drilling up an exploratory well for a new source. And so we are pursuing several funds.
Okay.
Good. Good.
Okay. There's no further questions and thank you.
Thank you, Ernie.
To Lau. And, and I don't know if you personally know, but I worked. I retired at the Board of Water Supply under Ernie. So these are like family to me. But you're doing a great job and I really appreciate you coming today too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's keep in mind. Okay, at this time, we're going to take a recess. We have some technical issues that Logan will assist us with, so.
One, two, three, testing, testing. Testing. Testing, testing.
Thank you, Logan.
You're welcome.
For your doing. Well, here we go.
Thank you. So Earl, just make sure that, it's for the presenters too, yeah, that microphone. Okay, whenever you're ready, both of them, pull that forward.
It's okay now.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order at this time. We will proceed with residents, community concerns. Are there any residents with concerns at this time for presentation to our board? Okay. This gentleman. And I just so all of you know, I'm the Chair, Colin Peros, is not here today because he is off island. And I'm the Vice Chair, pro- pretending with his disposition. Sir, could you state your name?
Come close to this microphone. It's okay. My name is Bill Chismar.
Yes, I'm Bill.
And I just wanted to check, I don't know what the status is on the replacement of the lights on the ball field right here. But I have a request that when they are replaced, that they be replaced with shielded lights. I live probably a couple hundred feet up on the hillside and a mile away. And the old lights were bright enough that they cast shadows at my house. So it was, it was a little bit annoying to look at and just see these bright lights shining and casting shadows. And I'm sure it's not good for the wildlife, for the bright lights to be shining up the sky at night. So my request is that whenever it moves forward, that there are shielded lights that are just lighting up the field and not to scum. Thank you.
Just to clarify, the field, it's the district park?
Yes, the park right here. Thank you.
That's a one.
Of course, that gotta be shit to Mr. Se.
So we'll bring that up with our council members here.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Okay, other community concerns?
No.
Okay, so moving forward, I'll go to item number four of presentations. So I'm gonna call on Water Water Supply, JD in Waseki Capital Project Division. And thank you to Steve, who sent me that email. So she'll present a proposed five-year water rate schedule.
Welcome, Mr. Se.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving us the opportunity tonight to come and talk to you folks on our proposed water weight, water rates and charges update. Um, I'm JD Nourasaki, as noted earlier from our Capital Projects Division. And as Ernest Law, our manager in chief, mentioned earlier, all of our team that is here. So I won't repeat that again, but they are, they are all here in support of this presentation and will be available for any questions that you folks have at the end of the presentation. So this slide shows you how large and complex our water system is in order for us to serve one hundred and forty-five million gallons of water every day to about a million people here on Waukegan. So the Border Water Supply is a semi-autonomous agency of the city and county of Honolulu. We're solely funded by rate pairs. We receive no funding from property taxes. And again, this only applies to water, not sewer. Uh, we get our approvals to our board of directors. Waste water charges are determined by the Department of Environmental Services and approved by the city council. So where does your money go? So this pie chart here shows you a third of our monies, the monies goes to our operations and maintenance and maintaining the water system. The other third goes to our capital improvement program and debt service in order for us to support and implement our, our projects to address the aging infrastructure. Our operating fund expenditures for this fiscal year twenty twenty-four is roughly about two hundred and seventy-six million dollars. So in the last rate update from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three, we expended seven, about seven hundred and seventy million dollars in upgrading the aging infrastructure for the water system. So why are we, why are we doing this? So there's a couple of things. Manager and Chief Engineer Ernie Lau mentioned about Red Hill, which that we'll get to on this couple of slides. Well, COVID nineteen, obviously that changed a lot of things for everybody. And of course, it did have an impact on our customers and their water use patterns. Next slide. Inflation has decreased our purchasing power. As you can see, inflation in the green at twenty point nine percent, which is roughly twenty-one percent. And our revenues of what we had projected and getting was at twelve and a half percent. So again, this eight percent differential is significant. So power costs are trending sharply upward. So despite the fact that we do a lot of energy conservation and, and maintaining the consumption that we have, you can see in the purple as it declines, but as you see the green, the energy cost factor, it's pretty much tripled from ten cents per kilowatt to thirty cents per kilowatt, and that is significant. So in twenty twenty-three, our electricity costs were thirty-three million dollars. That was twenty percent over our budget. Next. So as Ernie mentioned earlier, Red Hill. So again, the response for this, you know, is large investments that we're going to have to undertake. Monitoring wells for information on the contamination and how it's moving. Exploratory wells so that we can find new sources outside of its path. And again, we need to replace seventeen and a half million gallons a day of potable water capacity that we lost because of the Red Hill situation. And as mentioned earlier, it is still undetermined on the full impact that this has on our system and what we still need to do. So again, uh, a lot of unknowns that we still got to address in the future. What we've done, we chose not to pass those energy increase costs that I showed, that was shown earlier, that six million dollars. We did not pass that on to our customers. Instead, we deferred a lot of our purchases for our replacement vehicles or equipment. And we defer less critical capital projects as well. And so we held our already approved rate increases from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three and pretty much had a flat twenty twenty-four operation and maintenance budget despite the inflation cost. So you know, that's, that's the juggling act, right? It's, it's a challenge for us to balance everything between safe, dependable water service and affordable rates. So we continue to defer capital projects that are less critical. We focus on the water quality, source protection and replacement and our treatment of our sources. We keep our operation and maintenance costs as, as flat as we can. And we begin our update of a water master plan this year. And again, adjust our working day capital that we need to have in the bank just in case emergencies occur. So what this slide shows mainly is, is two really important things of investment that will happen. One is, as you can see in the yellow, it's finding new sources. And in the, the brown, it's the pipeline and waterline. The BWS customer classes, we have five classes here. If you look at the first class, the single-family residential, that's ninety percent of our customers. Ninety percent that uses about a third of the water. But the important thing is the positive recovery is ninety-five percent. And so that means if you look at the orange, the non-residential, they're the ones, and that money that we get on the cost recovery is what is subsidizing single-family residential, our agriculture and our non-potable and recycled classes. The water rates that were being proposed for the five and a half period will begin February first of twenty twenty-four and it will go into June thirtieth of twenty twenty-nine. It'll show ten percent in February of twenty twenty-four. Then it'll be at ten percent again, July of twenty twenty-four. And every July after that, it'll be at nine, eight and a half, eight and eight percent. All customer classes will have the same rate increase, but there'll be changes by tiers um, for different categories or classes, but everything is being consistent across the board of classes. So residential customers pay more as water, water use increases. So if you look here, you have single-family residential, so zero to two thousand gallons. You pay four dollars and forty-six cents. If you're using thirty thousand gallons per month, you're paying nine dollars and twenty-five. Same on the multifamily residential, between zero and two thousand, you got three dollars and seventy-seven. And then ten thousand gallons and more, you're at five dollars and ninety. And so again, that focus is we want to focus on those high users to encourage them to conserve. Increase for essential needs tier, we want to limit that to two and a half percent. Ten percent of our BWS residential customers use two thousand gallons or less per month. This graph shows that the rates are, like I said earlier, it's all designed to encourage conservation by the highest water usage. So if you look at tier four, which is thirty thousand or more, you go from nine dollars and twenty-five cents currently to eighteen dollars by July of twenty twenty-eight. Single-family residential water rates. So if you look at here, this is pretty much similar to what I just discussed, but what it shows you here, it shows you the tiers and then the proposed rates by each effective date. So how to calculate your water bill? So here's an example. You have a single-family residence, uh, three-quarter inch meter, usage amount about eighty-five hundred gallons, so rounded off to about eight thousand gallons. So you take the first two thousand gallons, which is the essential uh, needs tier number one. So at four dollars and forty-six times by two, you get eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Then you got four thousand gallons in the next tier two to get you to six thousand. So five dollars and twenty-five cents times four gets you to twenty-one. And then the remainder of the two thousand gallons to get you to eight thousand comes into tier three. Multiply that by five eight five and got eleven seventy. And then there's nothing into your four. And then you got your monthly customer charge for your three-quarter inch meter at twelve dollars and nine cents. And when you add that up, your total bill will be fifty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. As stated earlier, so the meter size charges are shown here for each effective date. A majority of our customers are using either a three-quarter inch or a five-eighth inch meter. So comparing water bills on the essential needs tier, which is again ten percent of our single-family residential bulk, so two thousand gallons or less per month. As you can see, if your current bill is twenty-one dollars, uh, and then each future months, uh, future effective date after that, at the end, it'll go up from twenty-one to thirty dollars and eighty cents. For average water user at nine thousand gallons, you start with fifty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. And again, similarly, on each proposed effective date goes all the way up. And at the end, at twenty twenty-eight, you're at ninety-seven dollars and eighty cents. And of course, the high water users at thirty-five thousand gallons per month will go up from two twenty-eight all the way to four hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-nine cents in the similar fashion. So multi-unit residential water rates, similarly, you start at the essential tier one up to two thousand gallons. Um, you got two, tier two, three and four. And you would follow the same process all the way through to July first of twenty twenty-eight. Uh, so similarly, we discussed on the single, uh, single-family, on multi-unit residential sample water bill, you would have it two hundred and seventy-two rolling units, a meter size of three inches, monthly usage of seven thousand, go from eight thousand to seven hundred and nineteen, then each effective date after that up to fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-three. And similarly to each of the different samples, examples we have. So a lot of it will depend on your meter size and your monthly usage. For non-residential customers, again, we said earlier, they pay a hundred and seventeen percent of their cost of service. Non-water, uh, non-residential water rates, similarly, in what we discussed earlier, it starts at five twenty-seven and then their increases would follow sequentially at each effective date going to eight dollars and eighty cents in July of twenty twenty-eight. Non-residential sample water bills, restaurants, hotels, churches, similarly with their meter sizes and their usage would follow the same way that I showed and discussed earlier. Current reduced rates will be continued. We have lower rates for our local agriculture and for recycled water. We will continue our, our fee waivers for affordable housing, for homeless housing, as well as for rental flats, fires. We are considering waivers for new farmers, we've installation fee and water system facility charges for new three-quarter inch and one-inch meters uh, connecting to our system for the first time. All of this is limited to a million dollars, which we were granted by the State Department of Land and Natural Resources for a new exploratory well in Fumio. Um, we just require proof of commercial agriculture operation and a water use plan. BWS, we offer water conservation device, uh, device rebates. We also have our water conservation programs, a lot of outreach that has been done and continues to be done with hotels and other businesses. Uh, also, we have, uh, for Kupuna that are living on their own, free low-flow showerheads and faucet aerators, water audits of their home, and then again, making sure that they're getting the appropriate rebates for themselves. And there's a lot of information on conservation. Uh, if you go to our border water supply website, you can find a lot of information there as well. So where we are right now, so in terms of the rate adoption process overview, we're in the last two boxes on the bottom. And again, we're, you know, we're here to receive your comments. Uh, and also you can provide those comments in writing to us, but we do want to hear your, your input, your concerns. So again, there's a, there's a lot of information in the handouts, in the slides that we had. Um, and definitely recommend you to go to our website. Uh, with at our website, if you go to, we have a section for draft proposed water rates, lot of information, a lot of facts, information for you. We also have a twelve-minute video, um, greatly, greatly done by our communication staff. Um, provide you a lot of information, clarifications as well. Um, please take a look at it. And again, we're here for any questions that we have. And thank you for allowing us to come here tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so are there questions from our board? Okay, Dan.
Thank you so much for the great presentation. Um, I noticed there's, there isn't any money to be spent controlling your electricity costs for capital projects. Is there, is there any opportunities for like using renewables and things? Because that seems like your highest cost.
Yeah, so we are, we are looking at that. Uh, we are actually have an energy savings performance contract that we are finishing up on. Uh, we have, uh, three megawatts that we've done and we've implemented. So that's going to help save costs. We changed all of our lighting, uh, so we have LEDs within our system. So we are looking at various ways to reduce energy costs. But it just doesn't keep up with the cost of the energy that keep going, is charging everybody.
Like, I'm just thinking, like, you know, where all the water comes from, like here, that's the battery that helps cost there. And there's a lot of that about that. If I light this, it's solar, you know, such things. I'll put that in there or whatever it is, yes, or something, you know, like, like every location, you got solar. Yeah, we actually do have a lot of solar.
You have more to ask?
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, if you guys don't mind, yeah, if you guys could come up to the table at least so that way the mic can pick it up for the people online.
Absolutely. Uh, we did, as JD mentioned, we did a project with Neresco a few years ago. It was still completing. We actually did put a lot of solar in a number of our, our facilities, including that, if you come to our main campus, we have solar over the, all the parking and everything. So again, as JD put it out, unfortunately, it's cost of risen more frequently than we've been able to keep up with, but we are absolutely, and we will continue doing so. Thank you.
Okay, any other?
No more.
Questions? Okay, very good. Uh, thank you. So the race will begin February first of twenty twenty-four. Okay, thank you. I know we went a little over the ten minutes, but water matters. Thank you.
Only tapping for a raise.
Um, I'm gonna call, uh, on, uh, Dr. Reed Huba, um, Principal of Planet Middle School for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Ernie. Thank you, Board for inviting the invitation to share kind of what's been happening at Jared Middle School. Uh, I've been there for, wait, eight years now. Uh, when I first got there, the our enrollment was at about two twenty-five, two thirty, and now we're averaging close to two eighty. This year was two ninety. That's significant for us because that equates to about three hundred thousand dollars more within our budget. So that helps the students and our programs at the school. We not only do that alone, we have many partnerships. We brought in the After School All-Stars Program. So actually, students could be in school from eight to five-thirty. And it's a robust program where it's not just babysitting. We got, uh, cooking classes, robotics, sports, if you're excursion on the weekend. So it just adds to students experiencing that. It really helps our parents because that after-school program is free at our school. students experiencing, and it really helps our parents because that after-school program is free at our school. So, uh, we got our students in school from eight to five-thirty. We're able to in the past few years bring our YTT Health Center. They can serve all of our students, as well as any public school student in the area, actually on the island, but um, we try to advertise it to Palolo Elementary School, Ali Alani, and they could bring their children here to our school for health services also. Um, along with the increase in enrollment, which helps us with our budget. I think, uh, would really help is that we check them. A lot of our kids were, before I got there, a lot of our kids were leaving, whether leaving or not coming. But we're getting a lot more students from Hopeful Hadi, Weenolio, Ali Alani, along with Palolo coming in. So, like I said, when I first got there, I asked for how many geographic exceptions we, we have, and my registrar would tell me two. I was shocked. Uh, but over the years, you know, we're averaging thirty, which again, that equates to a lot more in our budget to help all of our kids and help our school. Uh, we also have great partnerships with Eli Alani School, Jared, uh, Little School Foundation, one of the few foundations in the state. And they help support us in fundraising. When I was, oh, we also started partnership with Sega Cards, and we have the screens around there. So we've been trying to increase the experience, make it a better experience for our students. And one of the things we stress with them is to be caring and responsible to each other within school. We really want to push them to do that beyond school too. I know we can't do that all the time, and I get some calls with their, um, neighbors and, um, police, but just know that definitely that's not our intent, and I always try to help out the neighbors or, uh, police whenever possible, if some situation would occur. But again, we, yeah, we try to present to be caring and responsible, my model for every, all of our students, because a lot of them come behind both academically, socially, emotionally, is to be extraordinary. Not just be ordinary, but there's no way they're gonna catch up, if they just do the same every year, or increase their learning by one year, they'll still be behind, but we really push the schools to learn more than one year. So that's this extra ordinary that I try to push in the students. With that, I just want to give you the update that, you know, there's a lot of good things that are happening at our school. Bringing in more students, more families, more diversity. The challenges, though, that we may have recently is a increase in a lot of disadvantaged students that we have. Initially, when I got there, about seventy-five percent, seventy-six percent, it's increased in eight years, about ten percent, and now we're serving about eighty-six percent of our students who are disadvantaged. As well as that yield population, that's exploding. We averaged around ten to twelve percent, now we're up at thirty-six percent, so a third of our students ownerships their second land. So that's a challenge for, for our teachers, our students. When I got there, we only had a half-time young teacher, but now we're looking at three or four. And we've got to increase to service our students. And with that, I've, um, open to any questions, uh, anybody support that we could provide for the community. Oh, uh, the foundation that worked with the school actually has a, a dinner. Uh, dinner fundraiser at the Japanese Contra Center, November eighteen. That's in a couple of weeks from now, I think it's five to nine, five-thirty.
So, I think, I speak to the chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, um, can you get any, um, impact fees from students that might be, uh, related to a military, uh, pursuit?
Every school has that, and we fill out these survey cards, but, um, generally, our school doesn't benefit much from that because
Not much here?
Yeah. I'd say a handful.
So, we like the, well, the see so when it's
Yeah, we, uh, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be categorizing the tier one, but yes, we have a lot of you said, and disadvantaged would be, you know, student who's in special education, who's in, it's good, in English language learner or, uh, economically disadvantaged, who may be considered a tigers.
So, we must talk to them some deeps, even lives ago, and help with the, those groups that need even for hearing, like care, and dissolve, and so there she was, and there's challenges, and so the kids come in protesting. And they, they need to go and meet with a doctor, a doctor actually, by those, uh, actually, probably. Is your health services allowed for a doctor to present at some point in time to afford that second visit?
Yes, and I'm fairly certain, like, we, our partnership is with YTT Health Center. So definitely, I, you know, I meet with doctors, the, the nurses, uh, if a doctor is needed, I've seen them make that connection. Uh, ideally, for a lot of our families who go to Kalitun. We're trying to change that instead of, because when they go to Kalitun, they're absent from school, they're absent from school for the whole day, because they have to get down there and wait. We want them to change over to our school, they just come, there's no line, or we could even call them from class, do the checkup, and send it right back to class. Uh, but so same thing, Kamaki High School, they send their students to get health checks for sports. They just come by, check, and they're back at school, so. We're unique in that, uh, I think the next closest one is in Y-Nine, we have a health center. Um, Kabuku has a health center. We have this one in Palo District. Uh, because of COVID, some of the schools have nurses now, so we have that capacity, but we almost have the capability to do like full service now, kind of, yeah.
And they're trying to hear, but the lines have, they need to test me, then the, the second step, they need to go to a doctor. A lot of times, I can feel homeless or disadvantaged, they can't necessarily get to a doctor, they're going to it was just a system, Cal is close by, but it's not the same when you have to actually get them to go to so one of our friends was saying, perhaps if people could do more, certainly, where the mobile unit should all be the
So that would be a possibility, and, uh, I would suggest the lines cut either contact our school, or you can make the connection with the YTT Health Center, because they also have a mobile unit. Our school, uh, health center, though, can only service public school students, but they do have a health mobile that possibly could be on campus, if they have adults.
Any other insurance questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So I'm gonna, um, move on to our board business, uh, filling of vacancies. So we have one vacancy in District Two, one vacancy in District Three, and one in District Four. Are there any residents interested to fill in vacant board seats? Actually not, so then I'll proceed. Uh, but however, we are hoping for all any one of our board members. Oh, close one, a close neighbor, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna go to, uh, let's see, five B. So consideration of representation at the Family Christmas Parade. Um, I have notes here from Colin, uh, hundred twenty dollars would be covered by the Neighborhood Commission Office. The parade will be held on Thursday, December seventh, starting at six o'clock. So all of our residents should be prepared, because I think they start walking off the streets earlier on that day. So it'll go from Shamanad to Coco Head Avenue, along the eastbound lane of Y-N-I Avenue. Traffic will be contraflowed in the westbound lane. Okay, so I guess the concern was, uh, when I talked to our chair, was if we could find a, a vehicle or a car and, uh, then perhaps some of us could participate. Um, so is there any interest, um, on offering a car uh, for us to ride in, or any interest to participate at this time? From our board.
So we have a hundred and twenty dollars to apply towards the Christmas parade, or is that what?
Um.
Is that the entry fee?
Is that the entry fee, or is that just cost?
Yeah, so the entry fee is the hundred and twenty dollars, and that would be covered by, uh, my office for you guys to attend. Uh, you guys would just need to figure out, um, how you would participate, whether or not you even want to, which is why Beverly is talking about a vehicle, or you guys could even just, you know, show up and have your banner, you could have, uh, you could just walk in the parade, it's totally up to the board. But if you would cover the entry fees.
I feel like we need a pickup truck. Anyone?
Anyone has one, has one, um? A pickup truck.
Wait a minute. No, no, what I mean, the city compare for the bus, a four-bus.
No, for us to enter.
Well, answer, what is it, you must surprise on, on car to the city.
I would be, I would be surprised if that were to happen. But, I mean, yeah, I'll drive you guys around in my truck.
No, that's a main team of all of them, she, we need one car too. Our chairman's the
Under the boards, responsibility, I don't think, but my office, we don't have any.
Because liability, yes.
Also, we don't have like a
And to rent, to rent a vehicle, we're talking about hundred sixteen, hundred eighty, so.
Yeah, insurance.
Insurance. Somebody who needs a truck.
Okay, so, from what I hear, there's not that much interest, correct?
Well, I also would just like to, uh, uh, provide the info, uh, Colin already paid for the feeding. So my office is willing to reimburse him, but he already kind of
Oh, okay.
That's very nice.
Okay.
No, he just paid for the entry fee.
There's a little bit of incentive if you guys like that. It's already, yeah.
Okay, who else? Okay, so.
Yeah, a whole recruit.
I'll, I'll be at the, I'll be at the Kamaki Parade as well.
I guess I'll go, I'll do it.
Logan, the gallons?
Need a lot of help.
Uh, Randy, you're interested?
Yeah, I'll go.
What, you gonna walk?
Back and walk.
Huh? No, I saw them, we trying to get a vehicle, boy.
Okay, so, uh, where, where are we at? Randy will participate.
You know what, uh, I have to withdraw, I, I forgot about my health condition, I didn't think.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
You're talking about if there's a vehicle, it's gonna be.
Darlene, you're with Palolo Chinese Soul. So right now, I have, uh, four, four people interested, um, Dean, are you interested? Hello, okay, so, um, with four, uh, that includes you, Logan, so are you folks are willing to? Okay, so can you first contact each other and create a group, and is there a banner? Is there a banner?
Um, uh, Colin has, has, uh, two banners, you know, the, the, uh, yellow banners that you saw here in the last meeting. He, he has the banner, he has them.
So that would mean five people, so, um, maybe we can reach out and have Colin contact all of you, and he has the banner.
Yes, two, two of them.
He has a, he has a banner, the monthly meeting.
Uh, just, just to be clear, I'll be helping out with the city side of being integrated, but I will see you guys there.
All right, and we'll just march.
And then maybe you can find out for us the lineup, or where, what position we'd be in.
Yeah, so, so what I would recommend is just, uh, since there's gonna be multiple board members attending, I would just recommend passing a motion that the board would, the board is gonna participate in the parade.
Okay, so may I have a motion?
Uh, I move that the, that the Palolo Neighborhood Board participate in the, uh, uh, Kamaki Christmas Parade to be held Thursday, December seventh.
Do you may have second, they wanna need a second, all those in the, uh, discussion, any further discussion? You're all in favor, and if you're so, I'm gonna sit right back. Okay, uh, oppose? Okay, no oppose, motion passed. Okay, and if I'm up to it, I'll come join you.
Me too.
And Randy too. Okay, good. Uh, okay, so, uh, five C, uh, consideration of Christmas party during the December, uh, board meeting, uh, Randy?
I'd like to, uh, suggest a holiday party, we'll just call it a holiday party. It, it, to, to accommodate people who are not, uh, who don't observe Christmas, call it a holiday party.
Sure, instead of Christmas, uh, a holiday party.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's a friendly amendment.
That's a friendly way.
Why?
Okay, uh, what are your thoughts? But we would still need to hold a meeting.
Of course.
Yeah.
Okay, so we would have a, probably a short meeting, and then, uh, have a holiday, uh, party after, which would be potluck?
Potluck. Yes.
Potluck, and to our residents.
Yeah.
Okay, do we need a motion on this?
I would recommend a motion, just
Okay, I have a motion.
Uh, I, I'm, I'll, no motion, I move that there be a holiday party, uh, and, uh, uh, with the pop, uh, with potluck participation.
Okay, and, uh, a second?
My second.
Okay, Derek, second?
Uh, just some clarification, this is after the December board meeting.
That's correct.
Correct, so we'd have the meeting, um, and Earl is interested in singing, at least, Merry Christmas, she'll merry Christmas, see, we hit the castle, so.
No, no, no.
We can work that logistics out, so I will prepare to vote, and all in favor, please indicate so by raising the red. Okay, all opposed, same sign, okay, motion carried. Okay, and
Uh, excuse me, who's, who's the second meeting?
Uh, Derek?
Derek. And may I suggest you first dress festive, wear your Santa hat, uh, red and gold, silver, hot dog, festive. Oh, yeah, or your, your ugly sweater, or whatever, okay. Okay, uh, and then moving on, um, okay, so this is a very important, uh, discussion. Uh, we're moving to, uh, reconsideration of the meeting, uh, format. Um, and with that said, I have a note, uh, that Colin wrote, and I think he discussed it with the Neighborhood, uh, Commission Office. If there is no virtual option, Olelo will guarantee to cover the meeting. So Logan, is that correct?
Um, I'm, I, I can't speak on that, I wasn't, I made preview of that.
That sounds a little, um, sounds a little iffy to me, uh, if, if we don't have any agreement on that.
What do you mean, but we?
Okay, so, um, I think, uh, the board is interested to have Olelo.
Yeah.
And the board is also interested to have, uh, the microphones that Olelo provides us. So is the only way to, uh, have Olelo, uh, video us is to have only in-person meetings?
Uh, yeah, just to, just to speak on that, um, right now, there, so just for instance, um, the second Wednesday is where you, where you guys meet, there are three, uh, board meetings. And the videographers that, uh, report and produce the video for broadcast on Olelo. They are also experiencing, uh, staffing shortages, and basically, there's only so many meetings that they can, uh, they can be at, right? And so at this time, a majority of the, uh, meetings uh meetings that are attended by Olelo are primarily based on attendance. And that includes board, public, representative, like the whole meeting. If there's a lot of in-person attendance, then Olelo is more like, more likely than not, uh, probably gonna be present as well. But yeah, I know there's two other board meetings um on the same night as you guys. I know at least one of them has a videographer. And I can check on the other one, but right now it's just because of shortages, it's primarily based on uh uh attendance, in-person attendance.
Can I request that the matter be deferred until we get more information from?
What uh, what information are you getting?
I mean, in other words, you need to uh, uh, from Colin and, and from the city.
Yeah. That's a note. I mean, we can't, we can't do anything tonight before you find out some more, right?
Find, find out what, to be specific, if you don't mind.
Um, to find out whether, about the videographer and you can just make a statement, maybe I'm, I have this uh.
Yeah, just to be clear, um, like I said, it's, it's primarily based on in-person attendance. So maybe if you guys were to uh change your meeting format to all in person?
Yes.
Maybe that would increase your attendance enough.
Absolutely.
But there's also a chance that now you just don't have online, you don't have online participation. Maybe you get a little bit more attendance in person, but there's also a chance that based on availability, you guys still might not get a videographer.
Okay.
So basically, I, I can't guarantee it. Um, the contract that's awarded to the videographer, it's uh, it's not through the NCO, right? So that contract gets awarded to a, a different um entity.
Well, let's go with Olelo, okay? We, we gotta get a first before we know, okay? Two, two meetings also, okay? The people can know about it.
I, I guess I'm just concerned if we take away the virtual option, we're gonna be potentially limiting, um, you know, presence from our representatives, from our city council, mayor's office. Um, I, I just, it, it might be a little bit harder to access some of the elected officials as well as, you know, the city and county uh workers who come. So that, that's my, that's my one concern about removing the virtual.
Well, all officials supposed to uh attend in person. That's what they all did before the COVID nineteen, okay? So we just come back to all the same way of our neighborhood board was run, that's all. We never had with a webex or whatever. So they all come inside the meeting, duck inside. Maybe so.
Go ahead, Logan.
Yeah, so uh, sorry for talking so much. This, I'll try to think of the last time. But uh, the NCO's recommendation is definitely to keep it hybrid with in-person and virtual. It just makes it easier for people to attend if they're, you know, a lot of times even your representatives, they'll be off island, but they still wanna come before the board, right? And so that's why um, the, um, sorry, the webex is so important just because, you know, for instance, like you can have people that are willing to come and talk, but they can't come in person maybe every month, right? And so like Derek said, it just kind of limits your, your ability to get in front of uh your officials like that.
Well, I've been on the board for twenty something. We never get no problem when a guy gotta talk, you know what I mean? We were all, like you said, neighborhood board, everybody's hand, nobody complained, oh, I wish I could have talked, oh, it's in the island. You know what I mean? Nobody said that. None, none of the representatives ever said that.
Are there other comments? Other, other comments from?
So we just come back to the regular way.
If I could just make one more uh statement of, the NCO will support your guys meeting however you want it, right? It's totally up to the board. If you guys wanna go all in person, I'm more than willing to accommodate that. It's just a, as right, like as of right now, you guys are aware, in July, your initial convening, you guys did pass a motion to have that uh hybrid element.
Correct. So right now, for our board members, we have hybrid. Okay, so if you post make a motion, it would be a motion um to have it in person to possibly try and increase attendance, which would result in having Olelo. Now, I know what Earl is saying because prior we always had in person and someone would send a representative or email, like today I have an email of uh what's going on. Uh, but I think that the idea is to encourage people to come.
Yeah, right.
And I know while, while we had COVID, if we cut hybrid was probably the best way to do it because we couldn't even use in person at all. But are there any other thoughts or can I have a motion or?
One.
Uh, go ahead.
So it's still one or the other. It's not uh hybrid.
Well, we have hybrid now.
But it can be hybrid and or Olelo if for me. So like if there is not enough for us to call Olelo, can we still have hybrid?
Uh, yeah, of course. I mean, you guys are hybrid right now, right? You have attendees online.
Yeah, hybrid right now.
And like I said, it's still based on attendance, right? So you guys could have the hybrid element and Olelo if you guys had enough attendance.
And, and how much attendance would we need?
I, I don't have an idea. Like I said, there's other meetings tonight and uh I can ask. That's one thing I could ask.
And what are the other uh neighborhood boards?
The ones that meet tonight?
Yeah.
Uh, I would have to double check. Uh, I know one is Tahoe Boo. I'm not sure about the other one at this time.
Okay.
Hey, this recommended, we gonna be a, you per say, that's all.
Okay, so.
Dean, uh, Dean, uh, Chair.
Randy.
Dean, Dean has a comment.
Okay, uh, Dean, I'll call on you.
Sure, thank you. Uh, what is the advantage of having Olelo do the production?
What you said there?
What is?
What is the advantage of having Olelo do the production?
Why?
What's the advantage of having Olelo do the production? Is it a better production?
Yeah, that's right. Did, did, how long you been in the board? Don't you watch a, okay, Olelo, okay? Like before the COVID, whatever. And you can watch, you can watch the Polo Neighborhood Board, okay? And see how it, how it runs.
Yeah, um, what did you say? Olelo uh would video, would video all of us.
Yeah.
Month, we could watch the video of the, the reason why Olelo is better uh from what I gather is the acoustics. And secondly, we would have the microphone.
Yeah.
And it would be, our whole meeting would be recorded.
Yeah.
Uh, right now, the recording is, is uh, Webex, right?
Uh, yeah, so if you guys can see, Olelo is actually on right now.
Yeah.
Um, they still do all their recording. They still reproduce the rebroadcasts that go on uh channel forty-nine later in the month. Um, so they're still here. They still produce their same video. They just don't have an in-person presence, right?
Right.
Um, as far as improving the product, um, I actually had a speaker tonight that I was trying to set up. Um, I was just having difficulty with the Bluetooth connections. Have the Omni mic set up from the uh, the office, which I'm, you know, hoping will also work better next month. We're still going through the trial and error phase right now with some of the new equipment at the NCO, but we are making strides to uh improve your meeting internally as well, even if you might not have a videographer present.
We just wanna go back with how Olelo, that's all. Some guys, like you say, like they'll stay home. It's not the way for, you can talk and discuss with the people, you know what I mean? You know, that's everything, right? Come over here, the guy wanna speak, he can talk, take your microphone. That's all.
Perhaps um the board can further discuss it.
Yeah, I recommend if we go back to Olelo.
Are you making a motion?
I make a motion if we go back to Olelo. The right lower half, it was before the COVID nineteen.
So is there a second? Earl made a motion?
Just a, one clarification.
Yes.
Making a motion to have Olelo? I mean, Olelo is present, that, that motion does.
So we already have Olelo.
So you, the motion needs to be clarified and it would, uh, you make a motion to have in-person meetings.
Yes, we have in-person motion.
Meetings solely. That's the.
Is, are you making that?
Are you making that?
Yes, I'm making that motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Who has his?
He put it.
Uh, who else has?
Okay, but wait a minute, wait a minute. Um, is Randy making a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to have in-person um Palolo Neighborhood Board meetings. May I have a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay, there's a second by Earl. Okay, now I will go into discussion. Okay, Dean.
I'm sorry. It seems like um we have had this discussion about the hybrid several times. So we're actually gonna vote to go away from the hybrid and I, and I, and I'm concerned that it does not give options to people who are not able to attend in person. So are we giving up that opportunity for people to attend? So we could be on TV with Olelo and uh we take the risk of not being uh one of the three that they wanna cover. Um, it was, unless there's a way to know how many people will be attending, we risk that our meeting not be uh, uh, produced at all on Olelo if there's not enough videographers. Am I correct?
Um, Logan?
Yeah, so Dean, thanks for bringing up that point. Even if you guys were to move all in person, I would still be recording your meeting and Olelo would still be recording your meeting through my recording. So no matter what, you guys are on Olelo. That has nothing to do with whether the videographer is here in person. No matter what, you guys will, my office will always produce the YouTube video after the meeting of the meeting. And Olelo and the videographer will always be producing the video for Olelo rebroadcasts.
When we say on Olelo, you gonna be over here, you gonna be making the recording. Uh, whatever we talking about, that's how it is. Unless you boss, you don't wanna do something different. That's how it was, run, okay? You gonna take all the message, whatever we talked about. So when we get that stuff there, we don't have like, you get right here now. Uh, this first is fifteen twenty, so.
There are, there are any other comments, uh, Derek?
And yeah, I'll just follow up. Like, I, I do just think removing the hybrid option is a risk because again, it risks accessibility with our representatives um and with a lot of the community resources. You know, again, grateful that a lot of people showed up today to, to present in person. But you know, we're arguing, I just foresee that there's gonna be a lot more responses from elected officials via email, via written responses and not have a presence at, at the meeting if we remove the virtual option. So, so that, that's my concern uh with this motion and with this idea of removing the virtual option.
What, what you saying that, we getting in person, they're not coming?
We're, we're, we're taking that risk, Earl.
No, they come, look, we've been in the meeting all the time, okay? If it didn't happen five years ago, I can see what you're talking about. You're just thinking what, something might happen. This is what everybody come to the meeting, okay?
But that's my concern.
Yeah, it's, it, it, it's, it's something that happened, okay? Not something we thinking not gonna, that's the difference.
Comments?
I'd like to make a comment there.
Go ahead, uh, Darling.
I, I just want um everyone to know that COVID nineteen is still with us and that it's very contagious and now there's RSV and there's the flu. And for us sitting this close together, we're actually putting ourselves at risk. I, I think we should kind of spread out. But I, but I, but I think we should give people the option. I, I hear what Earl is saying, but there's no way we can go back to the pre-COVID days. Times have changed. Times have changed dramatically and people, people have gotten really more comfortable with the accessibility with technology like Zoom and WebEx and all of that. And I, I, I feel like when we were doing COVID nineteen and we had the, the, the WebEx, I thought we had a lot more participation than we have tonight. Tonight, the primary, the primary audience was border water supply. There's nobody here.
Nobody knows about here, so that's everything, right? You know?
Still.
Yeah. What about this? When you have a meeting, you like people to be in person.
But it's, it's dangerous. It's dangerous.
That's how it was all the time, right?
It's a risk.
I think we need to pay attention to the healthcare provider in the.
There's a risk.
Well, the health, you can always move, like you said. Like I want to tell my totally get to move, they can move.
So I will prepare to vote. Um, there's eight forums, so we would need five to pass.
Uh, no, we need seven.
I would recommend a roll call no matter what and no matter what, there's, it's a thirteen-member board. You guys would require seven for the forum vote, for the motion to pass.
We would require seven.
Seven ayes, yes.
Seven, come on, I.
Well, that's difficult if we have eight, twenty. Okay, uh, let's do roll call.
Okay.
Okay, uh, let's go.
Uh, Derek, I can, I'll actually do the roll call.
You do the roll call.
Huh?
Um, see, in favor of um the motion in person, only, no, I'm not, no.
You did. Um, I might say no, or you can either say I, no, or abstain.
What you say?
Uh, abstain.
Call it over. Val.
Uh, abstain.
McColligan.
No.
Nakayama.
No.
Onishi. Shiroki.
Uh, I.
Urban.
No.
Paris. The motion does not pass with one I, five no's and two abstains.
Okay, uh, motion uh is declined.
So what that means, no.
Uh, you can always bring it up again in the.
Come on.
But the motion uh did not pass. Okay, so uh we can move to our elected officials.
Oh, we have one more.
We have a item, uh, the um approval of regular me.
Oh, I see. Okay, uh, can I have a motion for approval of the regular meeting written summary uh of October eleventh, twenty twenty-three? Okay, Randy, so Moon?
Derek?
Yes.
Uh, just a quick comment. Um, and I, I know, I totally get, you know, especially, you know, we have good presence here.
I'm sorry, my, my chair, there was a motion.
There is a motion on the floor.
Oh, I.
My second.
Okay, okay, so um it's moved by Randy, second by one, uh, um, discussion on the uh, on the minutes.
Sorry, Derek, sorry.
Uh, okay.
All those in favor?
Oh, no, wait, let's talk about it, we go to some. I don't see, the minute is not inside on the report, okay?
So you don't approve?
Not here, not here, you know, when I stop, he never write nothing, what I said, you know what I mean?
What are you talking about, Earl?
That's going to discussion.
You don't only get the message, Randy, come on, Randy. You always gonna get your name, what you say, right? After we talk to the representative.
Well, this, by the way, the, the meeting format, minutes format has changed because of the the stated opinions from the Office of Information Practices. So it's, you have the timestamp here on the call to order, et cetera. It, things have changed because of the requirements set forth and opinion by the Office of Information Practices.
Oh, yeah.
With the sunshine's on. So that's why it's not.
What?
It has cha, the format of the minutes has changed. So you have a call to order with a timestamp uh, uh, in parentheses by it, monthly reports, uh, et cetera.
Randy, what I mean is, like you said, like the last time, every time we come in, Shiroki says so, so, so. I don't know, all, all the question, I don't see what I said or anybody else said anything, okay? That's what it is.
So you want, do you, do you wanna clarify?
Logan.
Yeah, thank you, my chair. Uh, just to clarify, so the way that the, the written summary works now is the main form of the minutes is actually a YouTube video, which you can see at the top of the minutes, there's a link. That's the first item on the uh, the written summary. Basically, during the meeting, I'm recording everything. I'm recording what you say exactly as you say it.
Yeah.
A lot of times in the past, um, and this was a big topic of conversation during the conference of chairs that Colin was presenting.
Yes.
So I definitely recommend asking Ken or me if, uh, if you have any questions after. But the new style of minutes, the written summary, is tied to a YouTube video. You can see every item in the meeting is tied to a timestamp. You can go through that YouTube video, you can go to the exact spot that you would like in the meeting and you can listen to exactly what was said.
Okay, you get over here, question, comment. Okay, you get over here, question, comments, concerns, follow, point two, two, five. We talking, we talking, well, get that formed up. What, what I said.
In the recording, so they're recording.
Why, why isn't it the same way how we in word and sense here? You guys trying to be high tech to everything, just nobody do nothing. Come on.
So I, I, the neighborhood commission.
So we all stay home, talk, talk, only the chairman come over here.
Uh, so Earl, I believe.
Oh, come on. We'll be there for the ball.
Neighborhood Commission has changed the format of the minutes.
That doesn't mean a stuff as you say about it.
We'll refer, uh, to your questions.
There, there is a proceed, now, I, I, I know, know Earl that you've had a, you had a complaint before with, that was filed with the Neighborhood Commission. Maybe, uh, that's where you need to take this matter up with the, the Neighborhood Commission.
Yes.
Yeah.
And they're open to hearing you.
I can make one more comment.
Uh, go ahead, Logan.
Thank you. Um, so the written summary that my office provides, that is a, um, a courtesy that we do to the board. A huge topic of conversation during the Conference of Chairs is that the board is really responsible for their own minutes. It says so in, um, the Neighborhood Plan. And that's just the way that it is. My office provides that as a courtesy to you guys and you guys can choose whether to accept it or not. The three options available to you after receiving the draft, you can either adopt the draft as written. You can make amendments to the draft and then adopt that. Or you're more than welcome to scrap my draft and write your own minutes. All those options are totally fine. And again, my office will support you guys. Whatever you guys pass as your minutes, that is what will get posted to the website. Just because I draft something, that doesn't mean it's official in any sense. It's your minutes.
So if we get boardroom in here, you know what's gonna happen? You'll get only the chairman over here, two guys. Everyone else gonna be on stuff there at home, just talking. How simple is it for you to do that?
I, I, yeah.
So we have a motion on the floor, uh, to pass the minutes. Um, all in favor, please indicate so by raising your right hand. All opposed, same side, okay. Uh, motion carried on the minutes.
With me, I oppose.
Sorry, just.
So all opposed, so one opposed.
Yes, this is a point of clarification. Are you, um, aye or nay, or abstaining?
I abstain.
Okay.
So I don't think there's enough.
You guys just trying to think, I think.
We don't inform them. So we have, um.
Well, for the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a aye.
Oh, so that's, okay. So that's, uh, went from abstaining to aye, that's seven ayes.
Only one opposed.
So seven ayes, no, or one no.
What, what, how come you looking for the stuff is not there?
I will explain it to you later and you can talk.
Oh, I know.
Um, so, uh, Logan, the motion has passed?
Yeah, motion is passed, uh, Vice Chair, seven ayes, one no.
Okay, so motion pass. Um, I'm gonna do a recess at this time. Okay, I need to leave the voting apart, so I'm gonna have Randy take over. Uh, so Randy.
You can stay over there, stay over there. You can stay there, Randy. Stay right there.
Thanks.
Okay, so Randy, um.
Where are we?
Here.
You're gonna proceed here now. The reason why I had to recess is I don't think anybody is here, but when you come to Calvin say, yeah, they want to know the estimate for the new lighting. But this is six B, so you're gonna look, six B.
I'll, I'll have to.
Then when you go to six F, he's not here, yeah.
Just like everybody, I said, oh, myself, hey.
You go to six C, darling can help you. When you go to six C, read this. Oh, darling can help you neither. Also.
Oh, no, that's just you know, too, I make difference already.
C and F, and you can drop this all off in my house later. Okay, um, so when you ready to reconvene, and thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Dallas is gonna help close up and darling and everyone. Um, does the key need to be returned tomorrow, Earl? Does the key?
Dallas is gonna return the key.
Okay, so Dallas.
Uh, before we, before we reconvene, if you're gonna leave, Beth, uh, can I give you your polo shirt?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
So lucky you got your polo shirt.
I know, easy lucky, we gonna get polo shirts.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for everyone's patience. I'm gonna give this to darling.
Oh, thank you.
I'm gonna get a polo shirt.
Wow, how nice. That's a nice shirt.
Yeah, so she.
We're, we're.
So next meeting gonna be Christmas, right?
Right here, right here. Got it. Okay, uh, is, uh.
Oh, can you pause back to order first?
Let's go back to order. Is the meeting back to order? Okay. Are we, are we in order here?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so we're going to Congressman Ed Case is, uh, the representative here. Oh, okay, we're going to Calvin Say. There is a cost estimate, uh, we need to ask, uh, Calvin Say, are you there? Is the office, uh, are you there?
I'm here, Randy.
Okay, I, uh, go ahead and present.
Before, before we can do the cost estimates, may I make a request to the Department of Design and Construction to, uh, request how much money will be for appropriations of the new lights? From that point, when they do the design and plans, you can make them, you can make the statement to the department that Bill Chismer wants the lights to not reflect into their homes on the 10th Avenue side of Palolo Valley. Bill lives in Wa, uh, Waimea, so he feels that the light creates a shadow. And that issue can be brought up with the Department of Design and Construction. Is that okay?
That's fine.
For, for next month, everyone, you're taking fun.
Yes, uh, Logan, go ahead.
Hey, uh, council member, uh, I think that, I think this is actually in regards, I could be wrong. I think this is in regards to the Palolo court lights, not the field lights.
This is the cost estimate for new lighting at the Palolo District Park. New lighting, cost estimate for, um, uh, it's my understanding is that the information from what I have here is from, from our chair Colin. The information is already one month past due.
Okay, I'll go and follow up. Is, uh, Mr. Mommy Zooka there? Warren?
Warren is not in attendance tonight.
Okay, I'll go and follow up with that request made to, I believe, Warren. But we did research it that there is no funding for the new lights at the park. At the park. But if he's questioning the playground, meaning the artificial type of, uh, playgrounds that the kids are playing at, the basketball court, et cetera. Try and distinguish for me what, uh, Bill is requesting. Is, is it the baseball field?
So I have here for new, uh, the cost estimate for new lighting at the Palolo District Park. I don't have the specification whether it's for the court or.
Yeah, so I, we, the NCO has been actually tracking this, uh, council members say. We actually got a response from, uh, Department of Design and Construction, but it wasn't a satisfactory. So we figured we would continue to follow up with them and prepare a better answer next month. But yeah, we, we are tracking this. We already submitted, um.
Okay, Logan, great.
Yeah.
Because, yeah. And then my, uh, report is in the chat, in the link. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. I had a great tour today of Palolo Valley. Went to visit, uh, Waimea, Kuaheha Street, Kuaheha Place, Waimea Road, all the way to the end of the road. Then we came out, we went by for, uh, the Chinese home, passed by the hospice home whereby, I believe we're looking for some resources for the acquisition of a generator. As we turn around, we went up to, uh, Carlos Long, all the way up to the top of, uh, Myrtle Street to look at the power plant that is up there, the Pukeli Substation. I have, I have, for all of you, I have two new, uh, employees working for me. Poasme Kauhani and Mr. Andrew, I can't pronounce his last name, but, uh, they're great, great workers. Melvia and Brandon. Brandon has already left Sakia and Melvia will be leaving at the end of the year. So that's the two new mem, members I have as part of my staff along with Janelle and Judy. From there, we went down to, uh, the laundromat, if you folks recall, the laundromat where they had a lot of, where there, where it was a gaming room. And now it's being retrofitted into a business that is almost like a restaurant type of, uh, old type of, uh, so, uh, how would you say, drive-in? We, uh, I did look into it and, uh, yeah, there won't be any more laundromat and no gambling house on that, uh, laundromat that you folks know on Palolo Avenue across from the Hongpa, Hongwanji Church. Uh, we did pass by also the sighting of the Palolo Avenue Rock voter that, uh, went through the home of the Sasaki family. And we highlight, I highlighted all the hotspots in Palolo Valley for the two new, two new employees that will be working for my office. Other than that, I'll be happy to respond to any questions that you folks may have. And, uh, yeah, if you folks want me to attend all the time in person, I'll try to do my best. But for the record, I have seven neighborhood boards that I do attend. And I believe Logan is correct. The first Wednesday of the month, it's Malua Neighborhood Board. The first Thursday of the month is Muiili Limakali. Second Wednesday is Palolo. Second Thursday is Saint Louis Heights Diamond Head Kapuulu. Third Wednesday is Kamiki. Third Thursday would be the Makiki Tanlis. And the fourth Tuesday of the month, at the end of the month, on a Tuesday, is the Alamoana Kakaako Neighborhood Board. So I hope, you know, for Logan, that there won't be any conflicts with some of these boards as far as, you know, conflicting with Palolo and others. Because I have to choose between the two. But, uh, that's my report. I'm happy to report, uh, whatever questions you may have and bring it back to both Mr. Mommy Zooka and I.
Questions?
I got a question for him, you know, Calvin.
Yeah.
They had a test, a fire alarm test this month. I couldn't hear the, of the siren.
Fire alarm test where?
We had, you, the once a month, you get the fire alarm, the siren test.
That's a disaster.
Huh?
That's a disaster.
Yeah. You see, I have, if we talk to us, we used to, I can talk to you right in your face.
The question is that you asked, uh, a fire test, is, okay. It's only now that you're saying that the sirens that we have is also for fire, tsunami, hurricane, et cetera. That's the policy that had been adopted after the Lahaina wildfire.
No, that was before they said, said, okay.
Uh, that's how, uh, then what happened in Lahaina, I can't speak for it, but, uh.
They said that the stuff was for fire and not only for tsunami.
Hi, um, Councilman Say, this is Melvia.
Yep, Melvia.
Oh, I think Earl is asking about the emergency siren monthly testing report that the state is in charge of, yeah? Haimea. And they did have a request, um, why the Palolo Valley one didn't work. And we did get a response back that, um, it is a state's responsibility and they have over forty sirens that have been vandalized and broken and in need of repair and the Palolo Valley is one of them. And it's a CIP, it's about, it's very expensive. It's like two hundred thousand each because of the wiring that is ripped out. Um, but yeah, our, um, Director, um, Kiro Toya.
Yes.
Reported back to us.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
But the, the message is that the sirens aren't the only warning program. You have to listen to the radio and television and your cell phone if you have that alert.
Okay, no, that's, that's great that you're correcting me, just that, uh, when Earl asked a question.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I'm just trying to respond in a proper manner to say, yeah, if it is the state, it's the state, if it's the county, it's the county. But my point is that, uh, maybe Earl, you have to talk to Jackson and Les to get the money in for the forty sirens that are not functioning at the state level.
Yeah, that would be a, a, a question, yep, for state legislators to to address in this. It's a CIP item.
Well, Melvia, you should explain to them, the board members and the audience, what is CIP?
Oh, okay, so it's a capital improvement project funding for which is separate from the operating budget for the state, for the state of Hawaii. So, um, you know, it's all construction related kinds of funding that run through, um, Department of Accounting and General Services. But each department has to put in their CIP requests. Their senators and representatives have to lobby for it because not all gets passed because there's only a a finite amount of CIP funds. It's all bond funds. So that's the process at the state level.
Okay, so at least you got your answer, Earl. And I apologize.
So it's gotta be, gotta, it's gotta be the state, it's gonna be Mr. Sayama.
Sayama Anihara, your senator.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, Councilman.
You're very welcome and thank you for tonight's discussion. It was excellent. Because probably, uh, in February, I'll get a lot of calls in regards to the water rate increases. So let's educate our neighbors that the reason why the water supply is increasing our water rates is because of the operational costs, the high expenses in regards to utility costs, electricity, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Representative Sayama, you're up. Thank you.
All right, good evening, members of the board. Public, uh, just briefly, uh, did want to touch since we're on the topic of the emergency sirens. We did receive reports, uh, from Palolo and Kamaki and Saint Louis Heights as well, uh, that the sirens aren't operational. So I'll be working with, uh, the House Committee on Land and Natural Resources and the Speaker to see whether or not, uh, we want that coming out of a budget request or if that comes out of individual district CIP funds. Um, ideally it'd be the former because if it does come our, come from our individual CIP requests, I mean to compete with school money. Uh, so that's still an ongoing process, but that's definitely going to be a priority regardless. Um, unfortunately, uh, we definitely need those sirens to be working. Uh, we never know, you know, something bad happens, right? Uh, other than that, I've been going around, uh, the valley to Aliolani, Palolo Elementary, Jared Middle School, and Nunuun. Speaking with the principals, touring their facilities to get a better understanding of what CIP requests they would be looking for for the next, uh, biennium. Uh, money might be looking a little short because the economy isn't recovering, uh, after the Lahaina fires. Um, we, we, we're really hurting that. So we'll, we'll see what the economy is looking like. Um, and especially with federal interest rates right now, um, getting loans for capital improvement projects might be a little bit more expensive. So we are getting, we are limited financially in that respect. Uh, other issues in the neighborhood, um, we've received some concerns regarding the hollow claw, uh, brush that's in the back, uh, along Waimea and La Maku. Uh, it used to be that, uh, the prisoners would come and they would cut the hollow claw back. But, um, after incident, uh, in which I guess their supervisor took them to the beach or something and said, uh, that program was, uh, canceled and they haven't come back since. So, uh, might, a plan, maybe, uh, community cleanup, uh, in coordination with council members say. But I'll let the board, uh, know when we do plan for that. Uh, my office has been, uh, coordinating with just neighbors and, uh, Colony High School students to clean up the, uh, the park on Waimea Road. Uh, it's all, it's on the side. It's very small. Uh, it's called Azama Park, but yeah, we've just been maintaining that as best as we can. Uh, so we have, uh, removed a substantial amount of green waste from that, so I guess that goes in. I guess that goes in to uh, plays well with the whole getting rid of dead brush for land management and forest fire prevention. Uh, we are planning something similar in Kamaki uh for the Mount Mya Nature Preserve Park, that's just completely overgrown the Holocore right now. Uh, in terms of state issues, uh, we've been getting some concerning uh indicators from the insurance industry regarding their. Uh. Insurance policy on condominiums, uh, that seems to be at a tipping point at this. Uh, and at this rate, i- if actually a market failure. Uh, so I think the state will do its best to step in to. Really reform a condominium management for A O A Os and uh its insurance uh policies. Uh, that is the same for homeowners insurance, especially after Lahaina wildfires. Um, insurance companies are reassessing uh risk of wildfires across Hawaii. And reinsurance industry is even more skittish than than before, so. Uh, they're currently in uh contract renegotiation, uh, we'll figure out in January what that looks like, but. Uh, homeowners insurance is expected to go. Uh, so the state might try to step in depending on how far it goes up to maybe subsidize that in some way or another. Um, but yeah, it, everything is staying far expensive, um, you know, and a lot of ripple effects of the Lahaina wildfires even in our community, so. We'll be doing our best in my committee of environmental protection and commerce to mitigate those insurance uh risks and issues in the state. Um, I'll be also, uh, I'll also be in uh walking in the Christmas parades, I look forward to seeing some of the board members there. Um, other than that, I'll be open to questions.
Questions, board members, you have a question, Juanita, yes?
Thank you.
Could you speak up, please?
Thank you, Representative. So uh, my question is, when we were mentioning about the Holocore in the various areas. And how would, so we would call your office if there are other groups that they'd like to come out and help clean up in communities? Whether they're Lions or other groups that are all on pockets that wanna help community.
Yeah, um, that would be great, uh, I could coordinate that through my office, um. I, I did see something in the agenda later on, but I did wanna give a shout to Eighty Eight Cleanups, they've been really helpful at Kamiki Mini Park. Uh, they've been recently coming up to here in Pola Stream, uh, in the back of uh Nuen Nuen's school, and they've been working on that uh area that's been overgrown, so. I think that happens every first and third Wednesday of the month uh from four to six, so if you guys wanna join, I'm joining.
And then one other is the insurance you mentioned, the three guards too, especially after what happened with fires. So, um, do they also assist, is their funding to assist? If we find problems in certain neighborhoods where these would be a major issue that would cause fire? Are there preventative funding that insurance company might wanna contribute to? To reduce their costs of what they've actually been looking at if they can pay out those types of insurance policy?
So local insurance companies do invest in community cleanup efforts, but there is no specific fund for, say, wildfire prevention risks. Um, depending on the property that risk is on, it's either gonna be just a private landowner or maybe state city. Uh, so the jurisdiction, it gets pretty complicated there, but uh for like St. Louis Heights, uh, there's been two wildfires in the past. On the ridge, the Manoa side, and we had a, a town hall two weeks ago, uh, with the community and H F D, H P D, D L N R. But that, just to give you a sense how complicated it is, it's U H Manoa, D L N R, border wire supply, city, county jurisdiction on that one. Ridge, so there's a whole lot of coordination that's currently trying to happen. Uh, and if you do identify certain areas in the valley, I'm more than happy to uh help and coordinate that effort as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I, I, I. Um, Representative Sayama, thank you so much for everything that you do for us in the valley, I really appreciate it. But I was just wondering that if you, if someone noted or anybody recognized that. The valley has really become brown and we've all noticed that the brown is getting further up. In the valley. And it, it's just a concern that we all have with the environment and all the change that are occurring, but. We, we see it in our valley. It's getting browner, right guys?
Yeah, you, you just, you just.
Yeah, so the state's only been going through a drought phase and it, it was mostly attention on Maui, Mauna Kea, but Wauauii is not uh exempt from that. Um, what concerns me is particularly, I guess, going into the valley, the left ridge where the rock fell down. Um, that property owned by Peter Savio, um, as more uh vegetation dries up and dies, the land becomes much more. Vulnerable to landslides and perhaps rock falls, so I, I'm gonna be reaching out to him, uh. One, I need to make clear to him that. Attorney General has made it clear that it's his, fuliana, his liability issue if the rock falls again. Two, what is, what is his plans for that land? Because if it just maintain, if it just keeps like that, then, you know, there's gonna be more trouble, so. We gotta figure a long-term plan for that property as well.
And it is gonna be a fire risk.
Oh, yeah.
There is. Fire risk, uh, um, even in my immediate neighborhood, there's three abandoned houses. Next door. Uh, brush needs to be uh rebated. Any further questions, Earl, you have a question?
Oh, good, good, I got two for you. Going back to the street over here, Sylvia wanted to make. A wall up on a top and then come down one more again, you know how much it can cost? Right now, I look at the mountain, I look solid. I can only suggest it, we should have one probably about. From the property line, maybe hundred feet, one wall, that's all. You know what I mean? One solid wall, maybe ten feet high or something, that's about if they're gonna have to move. I don't want him to go make update, you go out there, go missing up the rocks. You know what I mean, something else. As far as it is now, it look, it, it, it looks solid, but you can put down where, you know. Hundred feet away from that, you know. Property line, but yeah, that's all I think about, think about that, okay? The other thing about what I'm talking about now. It's a siren, you know how important a siren is?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, okay. I'm talking to you about now for valley, I cannot hear a siren, okay? So you gotta fix, do something about it.
Yeah.
Now. In Maui. When they had the fire, the siren never, never run. And the director said he has no regret. Yeah? You think if the siren, if the siren was on, how many life you think would have been saved? You know, you think about the guys who got burned. He's not, they're not, they're not talking nothing about the guys who got burned, they're talking about how much damage, I look at them, it's terrible. Now they're bleeding hard, electric, whatever. They should have cut the bushes long time ago. What I'm talking about, if the siren were running. How many life would have been saved? You think how much, you think?
Well, I can't say.
You know roughly what I mean, common sense, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Uh, you can think yourself that you was up there and then before you know it, you see only smoke. And before you know the fire ran behind and you cook, you know how suffering that is for getting burnt? But nobody talk about that. Okay, now the director says now that I have no regrets. Then the siren, you know.
Earl, what's the question?
You know what I mean? And so, let me go. Okay? Now, if I were there. And they said because only for tsunami. Uh, and I see the fire coming up from there, the water here. I pull up for a siren. You know what I mean?
Well, I.
Uh, common sense, you gonna do this here, right? Other people don't know nothing.
I agree with you, Earl, and I think. The state and Maui County agrees with you too because they changed the policy, right? They say, look, like the signs for wildfire or any emergency now. So I, I think they realized that it was a mistake, you know, the director guy, you know. He said, he says what he says, you going, you know, you'll have to face the consequences.
I'll, I'll, I'll tell you exactly, I, I, I assume. Is that. The people that was in charge of, of pulling the siren. It didn't ring, I assume enough, I'll tell you why. The, the one electric pole went down. So they had no electricity to run the siren. Okay? Think about now, like you find out for me for that now. Okay, and then. The second thing about them. Every. Building has a battery backup. Okay? So you pull up, it's a, it's a, our electric pole went down.
Earl, you made this point in the previous meeting.
Okay?
It's supposed to be a private conversation. Yeah, uh, and I think.
I'm telling him, I'm just, why, why that sound about Ron?
I'm going to excuse, excuse, uh.
We'll, we'll make sure the one over here writes, we'll, we'll make sure it's fixed.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Representative Sayama.
Alright, well, hey.
Listen, Earl.
Hey, come define me, bro.
Enough is enough, I'm going to excuse Representative, thank you. For appearing here, person, we appreciate that. And I'd like to proceed on and say that uh, Senator Ihara can't make it because he's ill tonight, uh, he has a cold. And we wish him a uh speedy recovery. Thank you very much, everybody, the meeting is adjourned.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.